Yeah, but it's like we had a personal.
We'd like to call the work session to order. The first item on the agenda is a presentation by SEMCOG. So if you use a microphone, just give your name and we can't understand it. If you could spell it, that would be even.
Thank you for having us here this evening. We always enjoy the opportunity to visit and present to our members. I am Grant Brooks. I'm a membership specialist at SEMCOG and I'm here with Amy Marmar, who is a membership manager, and we're going to do a presentation for you all. Well, just we'll be providing an overview of our organization, our recent planning activities, and our efforts to implement our plans in Ipsal County Township. Didn't turn the thing back on.
Did you turn it on?
Okay. All right. SEMCOG is celebrating 50 years of service to Southeast Michigan in 2018. Since 1968, we have brought together local elected officials, city, county, community, college, intermediate school districts, and village and township officials from throughout the region to work toward our common interests. Our region has an abundance of diverse places, and all those places are connected. The roads don't stop at the border of your hometown. Likewise, neither does the water or air. In June, we'll hold our annual General Assembly meeting, which will be the signature event of our 50th anniversary year. We'll be at the Little Caesars Arena. Watch for announcements as we get closer to the meeting. As you may know, we serve seven counties. Current SEMCOG membership are shaded on this map, all seven counties, as our immediate school districts and community colleges. Our funding gets provided by member dues, which we use to match federal and state grants that pay for data acquisition and analysis, planning and technical assistance to improve our region, and to support implementation of local plans. Each member community votes to join, pays membership dues, and appoints delegate and alternates to SEMCOG's General Assembly, our full membership committee. Your delegate is trustee Heather Jurelroth, and your alternate is treasurer Larry Doe. These are the people who vote on behalf of the township and are key contact people. Membership at SEMCOG is organizational, so all of you are welcome to attend and participate in our meetings, and attend workshops and connect our staff, contact our staff for any data and information you may need. You all receive our biweekly digital newsletter, Regional Update. This newsletter will be the quickest way to stay informed about SEMCOG's activities, upcoming meetings, trainings, grant deadlines, and legislative issues. You might also consider getting more involved by requesting an appointment to be the task force, or seek election to serve on a committee. These groups are where much of SEMCOG's work is done. Committee elections take place at block caucus meetings every June. Task force appointments happen throughout the year as we begin new task forces. SEMCOG task forces typically include representatives from the private and nonprofit sectors, as well as state and federal partners, so we can tap into expertise and perspectives of all areas of the region. For example, we recently launched a task force to look at coordination in our parks and recreation network. Speaking of parks, SEMCOG recently launched the Southeast Michigan Park Finder application was provides information on recreation opportunities for over 2,600 parks in the region, including water recreation such as water trails, as shown in the blue on this map, and regional hiking and biking trails in red. For any park in the region, a list of amenities and information like size and ownership is provided, as displayed on the screen with Ford Heritage Park here. Park Finder is now available in both Apple Store, Apple App Store, and on Google Play. We encourage you to check it out. We've also recently mailed tip cards about the Park Finder, as well as our free commuter matching service called Commuter Connect, which also has a, also can be found in the App Store, Apple App Store, and Google Play.
May I just ask, what was the criteria to get on the map, or the app?
Oh, no, there's no criteria. You just need to simply go and download the app, and you can use the Park Finder app or the Commuter Connect app.
Because it says 34 parks meet these criteria. I don't know what that means.
Uh...
I don't know what criteria.
I think that's just...
I think it's the location. Like, are you...
Oh, you're eating up here. Okay, I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah, the area that I selected is 34 pertaining on the amenities, I think I had selected here.
So every park is listed.
Right.
Gotcha.
But there's, yeah.
I didn't know if there was criteria. Sorry.
Oh, no. While policy direction of SEMCOG occurs at the regional level through the participation in committee and task forces, implementation primarily occurs at the local level through actions taken by local governments. We work on issues related to transportation, environment, and economic development. High-quality data is a foundation of our work. While much of this data is available on our website, our member communities have access to the people who are compiling the data and are available to conduct analysis based on specific needs. Stephanie Taylor, who staffs SEMCOG's Information Center, is eager to provide you with the information and answer your questions. Our newest data is the 2545 forecast, which projects the region's future economic and demographic outlook. The forecast numbers are available by community. Shown here is Ipsal County Township's forecast by total population, jobs, housing units, and households, plus expected construction. Forecast information at both the county and community level is accessible on SEMCOG's As I mentioned, much of our data is available on our website. One popular feature is our interactive mapping tool, which allows you to zoom into specific locations in the region and receive customized data on a wide range of topics, including employment density, traffic volumes, and commuting patterns. This allows you to, you and the public, to access data relevant to your local area. And now I'll turn it over to Amy.
Thanks, Grant. I'm going to spend the next few minutes to kind of take you through some of the regional plans that we've worked on recently, and the activities or projects that we've implemented stemming from those plans. So we developed the region's transportation plan, which prioritizes spending on the region's roads, transit, walking and biking trails, to the tune of just under $1 billion per year. These transportation projects are critical to preserving jobs in the economy and improving delivery of services, goods, and freight. We work closely with the county road commission and WOTS to collect, share, and analyze data on traffic counts, pavement conditions, and traffic crashes, all of which help to prioritize projects within the county and the larger SEMCOG region. The regional transportation plan is implemented through the Transportation Improvement Program, or the TIP. The TIP is a collection of projects that improves the quality and reliability of the transportation system for all users, as well as supports our economic prosperity. This chart, when I get there, shows the value of local TIP projects invested in Ipsal County Township in 2017 by type of project, and you can see the majority of funds were spent on roadway safety and operations. From 2018 through 2020, another 1.8 million will be invested locally on projects in the Recently, we've completed plans on a, completed a number of other regional plans, including traffic safety, bicycle and pedestrian travel, green infrastructure, economic development, and most recently, water resources plan. So on traffic safety, that plan is designed to improve road safety and guide investment and safety projects in our region. It benchmarks traffic crashes and identifies problem areas. It also includes specific strategies to address these challenges. To assist local efforts, SEMCOG analyzes and shares crash data in usable and easy-to-understand formats with our communities. For example, we just recently updated our crash location map that includes all crashes in the region over the last five years by crash severity, as well as key factors, including alcohol, young driver, pedestrian, and bicycle. And this information is available at both the county and community levels. One of the main safety concerns is the increasing crashes involving pedestrians and bicyclists. While those incidents with those vulnerable road users have accounted for less than 2% of all traffic crashes, they've accounted for 28% of traffic-related fatalities. We believe there's a role for everyone to play to increase safety in the region, so we've created a new safety education campaign called Walk Bike Drive Safe, focused especially on pedestrian and bicycle safety. The message is simple: No matter if you're walking, biking, or driving, it's your responsibility to be seen, be safe, and be aware. So we're encouraging everyone to pay attention and share the roads safely. Speaking of walking and biking, SEMCOG also developed a plan focused on improving bicycle and pedestrian travel. This plan includes an inventory of facilities, prioritized regional corridors, and regional strategies and action items that SEMCOG, the State Department of Transportation, and others can implement to enhance walking and biking. Our most recent effort to help push these projects along are an interactive map of the region's bicycle network. The goal of the map is to provide communities with a one-stop shop of all the known biking facilities in the region. So it has shared-use paths, on-road bike lanes, side paths, all included in one place. We're also working to implement a green infrastructure vision for Southeast Michigan. Green infrastructure includes parks, lakes, wetlands, trees, as well as constructed green roofs, bioswales, and rain gardens. Turning to economic development briefly, we have an economic development strategy that provides a framework for public and private entities from across Southeast Michigan to work together to share, or to work together to increase the region's prosperity. There are three focus areas in the plan, including community assets such as marketing the region and strengthening quality of place. Talent and innovation is another focus area that includes educating our future workforce and connecting people to jobs. And the third focus area is business climate, which looks at expanding trade and investment and growing entrepreneurship. Our most recent plan focuses on the region's water resources and includes topics such as the blue economy, focusing on the economic impact that water has in our region, natural resources, which includes issues related to protecting our rivers, streams, wetlands, and woodlands, and infrastructure, which looks at the quality and management of drinking water, wastewater, and stormwater infrastructure. An integrated water resources management approach is needed in successfully implementing each of these. We're beginning to implement some actions from the plan. Later this year, we'll begin visually mapping the region's major water trails. This mapping will capture a 360-degree view of key assets, such as Lake St. Clair, the Huron, Clinton, Detroit, and St. Clair rivers, as well as other water trails. So kind of like looking at Google Street View, but on the water. Working with Washtenaw County and the Huron River watershed, we plan to visually map over 100 miles of the Huron River Water Trail, including portions that run through Ipsal County Township. The last thing I wanted to mention about implementation is a new funding program that we announced just last week for planning assistance in the areas of traffic safety, multi-community planning, and road asset management. We have 300,000 available for traffic safety projects, 500,000 for cross-jurisdictional projects in the areas of economic development, parks and recreation, or road corridors. And we have 50,000 for the development of road asset management plans. You should have received that in your email. Let me know if you haven't seen it. Applications are due May 22nd, so pretty quick turnaround, but definitely something to consider. Finally, as you know, there are times when the successful implementation of plans requires that changes be made at the state and federal levels. SEMCOG works with members to advocate legislative priorities for the region. You amplify your voice by participating in regional advocacy efforts. Our current focus is on increasing revenues for local government, control of invasive species, and funding for infrastructure. On the regulatory side, we're working with the Department of Environmental Quality on drinking water standards and sanitary sewer permitting. So that's all we have. We want to thank you for giving us time on your agenda today, and certainly thank you for the township's participation in SEMCOG. Appreciate it.
Are there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I did have a question. First, I want to say thank you for the presentation to truly understand all the things that you're advocating for on behalf of all the municipalities in the region. My question is, as far as, I see all the different, I'm thinking recreation, recreation facilities, and more towards our youth needing some large recreation facilities. Here, eastern side of the county, we do not really have a real recreation facility. Is this something that SEMCOG has, is there any part of the organization that talks about recreation facilities at all?
Yeah, we just, as I mentioned, we just launched a Parks and Recreation Task Force, and that group will be guiding our work and looking at, throughout the region, what facilities we have where, where are their gaps, and where do we need to focus on filling in those gaps. So what you're mentioning would be something, would be a gap that should be brought forward and discussed. So, are you on that task force? Yeah, Monica is serving on that task force. I'm like, hey! Yeah, so bring back information and, you know, certainly feed in information through Monica, or check in with her on our website to find out when meetings are. You're welcome to attend.
Okay, great.
Those meetings. But yeah, we need that kind of local perspective to make sure our work is reflecting the needs.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
I just wanted to make a couple just general comments. Thank you for the presentation. The Park Finder, when you were looking at the criterias, it basically defines, like, by park type, does it have bathrooms, does it have, like, different facilities, does it have recreational facilities, is it just, you know, a walk-in path park? So that's what the Park Pathfinder actually defines. The reason I know that is because I'm on that task force. So I just wanted to clarify that also.
Yeah, we had filtered that to put it on the screen. So when you go to that application, you can filter it in whatever way you want. But the goal is to have every park on the map. So if you see any missing, let us know.
I downloaded it, so I'll let you know.
All right.
I have a question. Have you all discussed recycling, regional recycling at all? Because that's, you know, becoming a larger issue.
Right. We have, I think, over time, and I'm not sure what the status is right now, but have served on county solid waste committees and participated in that. So that's probably where we would delve into those kinds of issues, and kind of taking the lead of the county, of those committees at the county level.
Okay. I didn't know if that was on your... Any other question? Ms. Kaiser, if you could go to...
Hi.
Is it on? It's on the microphone, literally on the microphone.
It's on the microphone.
I'll pull it out.
My name is our law, Kaiser. Is that on?
Thank you. I have a question. Do you deal with this regional transit authority that we are hearing about for the five counties?
We work closely with them, but they're a separate organization.
Okay. Because I am opposed to that. Oftentimes, we, as a group here, end up paying for these things, and we don't make any, or get, receive that many benefits from what we put into it. In the same way, I know you work hard at making all these fancy presentations and exploring this and that, but I would like to see a lot of the money go into the basics, the roads, the safety, that type of thing. Because my question is, what percentage of people actually do the bicycling, walking? And what happens is, the few people that do it go to meetings, so therefore, everything is voted towards them. And a lot of people don't bicycle, or walk, or that type of thing, and yet, we're still putting big tax dollars into these type of things. And that's my concern.
Thank you for that. Any other comment? Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to go to the consent agenda, well, public comments. Are there any public comments? Consent agenda, we have the minutes of the April 3 work session, a regular meeting, statements and checks, and the treasurer's report for March. Any questions or comments? Attorney's report?
I'll do it during the regular meeting, please.
Okay. Under old business, we have the request of Brian McCleary, Assistant Assessor for the Authorization to Enter into Negotiations. He's actually sent a letter requesting this be removed from the agenda. So Brian's here if you have any questions, but that was a request. Okay. So, I'm not sure what you want.
He's got to take it off the table.
Okay.
Just wondering why we're removing it?
Yeah, there was, at the work session, we had talked about the process for selling it, and the entity that was interested in purchasing, we're in the process of purchasing the church next door. So it was a church that requested to purchase it, and it's an acre lot, and we could probably actually build houses out.
It wasn't an individual then? It was for a group?
Correct. It was a church, yeah. Budget amendment number eight. Any questions on that?
Madam Chair, I did have a question on that. On 266, I guess the Environmental Services Fund, it is stated in the second sentence, the fees of tons have increased from $10 to $78. Our average tonnage is 120 tons, $10 per ton, $1,200, at $78 per ton, at for $9,360. But it also says that we did increase the budget for 2018 to $95,000. We did not estimate an increase of 680%. Why is there an increase of 680%?
Well, and we briefly talked about that when Evan Pratt was here. So recycling, we would take our recycling to a, what's called a MRF center, and they would separate it out. If there's a market for it, they would sell it, and we would actually get money back.
Okay.
And we have not been getting money for, what, four years probably? Three or four years? But the MRF was purchased by a new company.
Okay.
So the rates for the recyclable, to drop it off at the MRF, has increased dramatically. So we have our waste management, the costs contained, but the recycling, we did not, because someone else owned it. So there's a real, that's why I was asking about regional recycling. There is a real issue with, you know, what are we going to do? There's no market for it currently.
Right.
And China is no longer taking our recyclables, plastics, glass. They used to take everything, and they're not doing that anymore.
Right.
So at first, they said that was part of the reason for the increase in cost, but there's no market for it right now, so they store it. We've got a, we have a meeting with the new owners of the MRF to make sure they're not just putting it back into the garbage, you know, the landfill, because that would defeat the whole purpose of recycling if that was happening, and we don't know. So we're going to meet with them to get a better answer.
Okay.
So it's like a tipping fee now. We're not getting any money back for it.
I just had another, just one more question. Would they consider lowering their fees, or no?
No.
Okay.
Nope, they're not. Supply and demand, you know, and they're just...
Are they storing everything, or just plastics?
No.
No market for anything, or just...
Right now, and that's why we're meeting with them. To find out, you know.
You don't know what they're storing?
No. And I would like, you know, I think we would want to know as a governmental entity if they're storing it, or, I mean, I would die if they were just taking it to the landfill.
Yeah.
So, and we don't know. Republic actually purchased the MRF.
Hmm, okay. All right. Well, thank you, that answered that question.
Any other comments or questions? And as we get more information, we'll keep you updated when we meet with them. Number two is request of Chief Copeland for approval of automatic mutual agreement with the Van Buren Township Fire Department. Van Buren was sending two trucks, and now they're going to be sending one. The next item is the first reading of Resolution 1807, which is for requiring registration of commercial and industrial businesses. The new board members wouldn't know this, but we've been talking about this for, what, probably eight or 10 years, Dan?
A while.
Yeah. So we finally have a proposed ordinance to have businesses register with the township upstairs in the building department, or OCES. Are there, I don't know if there's any questions. A lot of times, what we were finding is there's a lot of turnover in businesses, and we had no knowledge of it at all. And a lot of people come in to ask, you know, do we file a DBA here, or do we, we want to inform you that we're going to be moving a business here? So a lot of people ask that question anyways. We just never had a ordinance, and this is the ordinance it actually does have.
This will, I'm sorry, this will also help with the Michigan Ave Corridor study. That was one of the topics that came up, was a directory of businesses, so that they can interact with each other, and so that residents will know what we have here.
Right. It helps the fire department as well, if, you know, they have certain hazards that they're dealing with, and we're, for safety, it's an important aspect of it as well.
I had a couple of questions. Madam Chair, if possible. Number one, I guess, is there, I know I read down in information, a $200 registration fee for the businesses? If so, is that every year?
Where are you?
I thought, I thought I saw that. It was way...
What page are you on?
Okay. Let me try and find it. It looked like it was free, and then it, I saw something that said $200, so...
Madam, is it okay if I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead. I found it.
No, 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 if you find it, go for it.
Okay. It's actually where, it's downward, it says the business registration application, it's not refundable, $200 registration fee.
What page, I can't...
It's 87.
Page seven?
Yeah.
Is this on the app? It's for the new businesses. I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
I know, I can't even... Yeah, let me re, so basically, is this coordinating with the ordinance where the business would have to register, or if they are existing businesses, would they have to register and pay the $200 fee?
No. Existing businesses do not have to pay a fee.
Okay.
But all new businesses as well.
Okay. Thank you. That answers that question.
I'm sorry, I'm slow.
That's all right.
You know, you've got a good point, though. We probably need to have two apps. This app makes it look like they have to pay. Old businesses, we want them to register, but they don't have to pay, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Good point.
Heather, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just curious if there's going to be a way for them to submit this form, like, online, or if they would actually have to come into the office to do that?
Currently, there is no way to do that.
There is, or no?
Currently, there is no way of doing that, but I know...
Like, they couldn't just fill it out, scan it, email it in?
Oh, they could probably do that, yeah. Charlotte, would you like to?
Charlotte Wilson, Planning and Zoning. I think that for this first round, the initial, just sending it out and getting, you know, everyone to start on this program, they would not need to pay, so therefore, I think that it would be viable to have them scan it in, since we are trying to, you know, make sure that everyone is, you know, in the system.
Mike Grant, I had a family emergency, so he's not here.
I had one other question.
Yeah, sure, I'll do the best I can here.
Does this cover home-based businesses?
No.
No.
No?
That's something we can consider further down the line, but for this first initial, it's just gonna be industrial and commercial businesses.
And for existing businesses, are they, would, I know, I read something that said they will be included on a website, if I have it correct. Is, will they also be included even if they don't have to pay the fee, or no?
Uh, so for, I'm a little bit confused, are you saying, like, when they, this first initial round of registering, is they're waiving the fee, but, you know, any subsequent businesses or a change in business will have to pay that fee?
Okay, right.
And, yeah, we're trying to get them all on the website, be as a part of the, you know, corridor study that's going on with East Michigan Avenue and E-course. We're trying to promote our businesses.
Oh, definitely.
And everything, so it would, they would all be posted on the website, I guess, yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Madam Chair, just like, kind of along the topic, I just wanna say thank you to Charlotte, because you're doing a great job, and we're so excited you're, I'm so excited you're here. We're all excited you're here, but you're doing a really good job.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
It is the first reading, so if anything comes up, any questions?
We can...
We can address some at the second one, which will be on May 15th, right, Lisa?
Doug, do you have anything to add to this?
No, I think in answer to Stan's question, we initially had the home-based businesses in there, but we had quite a robust conversation about the, trying to at least get the existing ones registered initially. It's not something we've decided right now, would not be addressed in the future. And I think we also may have discussed trying to figure out how to file something online by somehow utilizing the Talus BSNA program. And I'm not very sure exactly if we've given it, you know, there's still ongoing conversations about this. So as you get more and more involved with it, trying to get the compliance, I think that, I think it might go up even higher if there was an easier way to, to register. So all those ideas are, you know, great ideas, and we discussed many of them, and just trying to get something going to see how we do in the, maybe in the first 90 days, and then try to see how we can tweak it going forward. But I think it's gonna be a great start to at least just identify those businesses that, and also for the fire department and the other people, they have to somehow be aware of the addresses, and who's where, who's handling what in the town, especially in industrial, in industrial districts. So it's a work in progress, I don't think it's gonna begin and end, it has to start somewhere, I think.
If you have more questions or suggestions, then we can change it by the second reading.
No, just one more comment, Madam Chair, if possible. I'm actually happy this is happening, I know this is something that was discussed previously, in regards to making it easier for people that are residents of Ypsilanti Township to find businesses in Ypsilanti Township that can serve their needs. So that's actually a really good thing, and I'm glad this has occurred, and I just wanted to make sure that the fee was not gonna be charged to existing businesses. Yep.
Okay. The next item is the Resolution adoption of professional service history for Township Attorney, Planner, Engineer, and Fire Department.
So I have an updated version, or not an updated, but some members had asked for providing the current fee schedule, and for comparison to the new one, so I have those available here.
During our planning meeting, some of the feedback that we had received was that it was hard to follow the previous, am I correct, Charlotte? It was, you had to go to different areas of the...
So if you look at that one, it's gonna show that it's organized alphabetically, which is pretty confusing, I think, for us and applicants alike, because it doesn't go through necessarily each item that's specific, you kinda gotta jump around, like, pre-application meetings in, you know, under P, but, you know, detailed engineering is under D, so it's kind of, it's all around and jumbled up. So our goal with this new fee schedule is to really organize it for us and the applicants. Some major changes were just general formatting, as I said. And the copy that's provided in the packet shows the breakdown of the fees. The main switch, I think here, is the development review fees have gone from a escrow, from a lump sum to an escrow, so we can really have more transparency between what we charge, between, you know, the consultant and what we have the applicant pay. So before, we were charging a lump sum, no matter really what the project was, and then, you know, the consultants had to work within that number, even if it was, you know, a large project, it wasn't really reflecting, I think, the amount of work that either consultants or the township put into it. And now that we hear it, it will reflect a more transparent way. And with BSNA, it's really easy to track those hourly charges.
It also was based on acres before.
Right, right.
Yeah, so if you were engineered, if it was a large site, then it was just based on acres, regardless of what the review was.
Right.
So this is more of a, like you said...
Transparent, yeah. And, yeah, we met with consultants, I did a lot of review of different surrounding communities and what they're charging. And I feel like we're, you know, we're not really low, and we're not really high, so we're, I feel like we're right in the middle, and I think it's a fair, a fair fee schedule.
Any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, it's definitely, just like, compared to this old one, much easier to read and really nice, user-friendly.
I almost needed an app to look for our ordinances, to figure out how much you're gonna pay for a development, it was really hard to find, yeah. So Charlotte has been working with Carlisle Wortman on updating our ordinances, and this was a big part of it. Alright, the next item was a request for a rezoning on East Michigan Avenue. It's current B3 general business to IRO, Industrial Research and Office. This has been recommended for approval from the Planning Commission, and Charlotte, would you like to?
Yeah, I'm happy to go over this, so at 1250 East Michigan, it was an old automotive parts supplier, and it currently is zoned B3 general business. The prospective tenant is wanting to rezone it to IRO, Industrial Research Office, so that he can do his professional engineering offices that are, is gonna be validating electronical components. And there's this equipment, data testing, and storage aspect that didn't really fit into the B3 general business zoning, and that's why he came to us to rezone. The future land use plan for this parcel shows it as urban commercial corridor, which corresponds to the zoning districts of P1, RM5, B4, B5, and B6. B4, B5, and B6 have been eliminated from the zoning ordinance as of March 1st, 2018. Therefore, the correlation between what would be permitted there is a little outdated, so to speak. The current uses that surround the property are B3, and then to the south of the property is the Norfolk Railroad. And then beyond that is actually RM2, which is multiple-family residential. We believe that it's consistent, or with the policies, the future, and while the future land use map recommends that as urban commercial corridor, since those districts correspond with the ones that were removed from the zoning ordinance, and conditions have changed since that master plan was updated in 2014, especially with the American Center for Mobility. That's one of the main reasons the applicant is wanting to be here. And I feel like with the corridor changes on East Michigan Avenue, this is something to, that's going to be a long-term change in spurring the corridor. And one of the things that I really wanna bring up is the uses that are associated with the IRO, and if you compare them to the B3 current uses that are permitted, I think that they would go along with the intent of the corridor, which is the compatibility between operations and activities of the neighborhood that have, you know, these office buildings and data processing, they're all pretty contained. And if you compare that with the special conditional uses that are permitted in the IRO are some manufacturing, as long as they're enclosed, and Planning Commission can, you know, put their restrictions on that, including also retail services. And then, you know, you have on the B3, you can have those used car lots in the SCU and restaurants. So I feel like they're, it'd be more contained and spruce up the corridor and that kind of thing in this rezoning.
I believe the petitioner is here.
Yes, the applicant is here, would you like to have him come down? Carlos?
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Pretty good.
Give your name.
Carlos Gutierrez, owner, GM, and T-Engineing.
Yeah, and also township resident, correct? Township resident?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that is correct.
And just tell us a little bit about your movement, your business from Plymouth to...
Yeah, we're trying to move closer to the American Center for Mobility. The technology that we have, we have a patent, and we think is gonna fit perfectly for the purpose, for testing. We're a clean company, we're certified by NASA, so we're planning to bring jobs and be closer to home, to the town of Ypsilanti.
Clerk Row?
Well, I'm excited about the fact that you're coming here, and I'm, you know, I think it fits, I've been working on the East Michigan Ave and E-course Road changes, and this is like, perfect, this is where we wanna go, and so it's great to have someone coming in that wants to go with what our, everybody that's meeting on that, with that team is visualizing for the corridor, so...
So glad to hear that.
We're excited, especially because you're a township resident, so to be here, to live here, to work, we always pride ourselves, and Ypsilanti Township is a great place to live, work, and play, and you're gonna, obviously, hopefully, you get a chance to play at some of our parks around the lake. But yeah, so we're so, we're so excited, and just wish you just the very, very...
Thank you, so glad to hear that.
Best success, and then, you know, of course, you can ask anybody here, anything that we can do as you move in, and hopefully, if the rezoning goes through tonight, and then we have two readings, another one on May 15th, I don't wanna jump the gun. But yeah, that, I think it's gonna, and I think that rezoning, it's gonna help you in terms of whatever you gotta do, financing or whatever, that more fits with what you're doing instead of the B3, you know?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Karen.
Really, really excited.
We wanted to make the things right since the beginning, so I think, you know, IRO is more appropriate to the line of business that we have. Thank you very much for your support.
Any other questions or comments? Stan, I know you sit on the Planning Commission, and it was discussed...
We do, Karen's correct, it fits right in with the Michigan Ave corridor survey that we're doing, and it caused a little bit of question when we first came in, but once the applicant came in, very well explained what it was, and put us all at ease, and so it's, in my opinion now, a very good addition to that corridor, and we're very happy to have you, instead of letting you stay in Plymouth.
That is correct, and I hope some other companies will follow the example. We've been talking to many of our suppliers, many, many automotive suppliers, German suppliers, Middle East suppliers, Asian suppliers, suppliers from the United States, Latin America, and they're asking me why Ypsilanti. So I mentioned the business environment is very friendly, and we mentioned about the American Center for Mobility, you know, one of the main reasons. But, you know, I hope we can be an example for other suppliers, that they can see Ypsilanti like, vibrant zone, that you can do business.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We might use you for a video or something.
I was just gonna say the same thing.
Well, if everything goes well, I may bring you some, another case for a company that they might be looking for. We're talking to a Japanese company. So we're trying to convince them that is the right zone between Ann Arbor, where a lot of OEMs, Japanese OEMs in Plymouth suppliers are. So it would be a strategic place where you are right in the middle, between the OEM and the suppliers. So hopefully, everything will work, I'll let you know.
Very nice to meet you and to work with you through this process.
Same here, same here, thank you very much. Good evening.
The next item is authorizing the division of a platted lot in Country Club Park subdivision. Brian is here, if there's any questions on this. Karen and I was trying to remember, we think this is the only second one in 30 years, I can't remember another one.
We will make to 2011 to find it, right?
Yeah, I mean, I just...
Fairview or something?
Well, you searched all your documents.
Very rare, Brian McClary, Assistant Assessor. So property owner Dennis Schultz came in and wanted to divide his property up. He currently has four lots, and if you take a specific platted lot and you break it up, then it requires the board approval. If you were to take two lots and separate them as a whole lots, then it wouldn't require the board approval. And as Brendan said, it's been a while, we looked through our files and previous ones to get the format down for the procedure. So what the property owner wants to do is he wants to take lots 116 and 117, and then the west half of lot, 118, for parcel one, and then for parcel two, wants the east half of lot, 118, and all of 119. So 118 is the problem lot, in that that's required to divide in half, and then the board would have to approve that.
Is he a builder, or...
He's owned and lived in that property, I'm not...
Cause it says Carpenter Road is the address.
Right, I saw that, but he did live in the property, I'm not sure currently if he is, I don't know if he's a builder, he's just moving, and wanted to sell the property, and so he was gonna sell the house, and then he wanted to sell the lot separately.
Questions, Clerk Row?
After you and I spoke, which took a while for me to get a hang on, I know that we've done this, like, for developers that have come in during the process, like, after we've approved the plat, and then they'll wanna do a different sized lot or something, but the only other one we could find was one was done on Fairview, which I think was 2011. But after you and I talked and stuff, were these original parcels, are they, how big are they?
So each lot is 60-foot frontage.
So I was just wondering, for the zoning and stuff, is probably that, maybe that's what's driving it, he's gotta have a bigger...
Well, it's 60-foot frontage, so his original parcel was 240-foot frontage, which is larger than the surrounding properties. And so he wants to go with the 90-foot on one, and the survey is, it's attached on there, but it's the... 150, 150 on the other, and 90 on the...
Yeah, what I was wondering is, which maybe Charlotte wouldn't know, on the zoning in that area, I know she did the letter saying it was alright, but can you build on a 60-foot lot there, if that's what's, it doesn't matter, I mean, we can vote for it or not, but I was, was wondering if that, if he was adding to that lot, because he can't build on it.
Well, it would have to be compliant with the ordinance.
Yeah.
And able to build before we would divide it out. Maybe Charlotte...
No, there was a letter from Charlotte, did it say what zoning district it was?
No.
Anyways, it was just additional question I had, like, was that why it was splitting it that way?
I could look that up and provide it to you by the board.
I mean, maybe it doesn't matter, because if they're grandfathered in, doesn't matter? If the original parcels were 60, then you could still build on them?
Well, if it was planted, personally.
So maybe not.
My thoughts were that it would exceed the... My thoughts were that it would exceed the, at 90-foot frontage.
Oh, yeah, now.
And then at 150, it would exceed the.
Right.
Buildable lots.
It has to be the minimum it can exceed it. So he's selling his, is he coming, do you think, or no? I'm just wondering, is he gonna sell his home and the lots?
That's my understanding. He just wa, he wanted to sell it, and he wanted to break it up and sell it separately.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just, I mean, if I, like, I don't know this person, but if I had to guess their intent, it's probably just because their housing market is so, you know, like, he could probably profit more if he sold his plots or future housing to be built. That'd be my guess. If it was my house, that's what I'd wanna do.
Any other questions for Brian? Okay. Thank you, Brian. The next issue Doug, you'll have to handle is a request for authorization to seek legal action against property located on Woodburne Concord.
Yeah, the, I may have seen the last week or 10 days, I had sent over to all the board members a copy of the notice of violation for the, this apartment here in Heights, here in Ridge. And apparently, in March of last year, there was wind damage, windstorm, and resulted in the placement of a good number of blue tarps on the roof of a number of apartments, apartment buildings in this complex. In addition, there were many other violations of the township's property maintenance and building code. And so I also sent over last night, there was actually a 1997 development agreement governing this apartment complex. And even two years ago, I think I sent a letter just saying I thought there were a number of issues that they were in violation of in regards to this apartment complex. So all that being, being stated, I did discuss with Director Radzik that I both thought the appropriate, the more appropriate forum to handle all of these issues would be in the Circuit Court as opposed to the District Court. And given the fact that these apartments have been under a blue tar for 13 months, and many, some people have already claimed that the water has come into their apartment units. Some of them are stating there's been mold inside the apartment units. At this point in time, I really don't think it's, that the burden of trying to resolve whatever insurance dispute, if there is one, between the insurer and the apartment owner should, should be borne on the backs of the people who reside in this apartment complex. And so I really don't care if they didn't have insurance, the same action would be taken. They gotta repair their roofs. And so at this point in time, I think they may have taken out some permits to proceed forwardly, but I don't believe they've done so yet. And I don't think they're going to move in an expeditious manner, given the 13th month history that they've already demonstrated. And so again, I'm very concerned with, once it does become warm weather, if there is mold that could be in these, in these buildings, it needs to be eradicated and it needs to be properly addressed. You can't have tarps on these buildings for 13 months. And so again, I've talked with Director Radzik. He's talked with other enforcement officers. And if the board so authorizes, we're going to proceed to have the jurisdiction moved from the 14B Court to the Circuit Court that can be much more, I think, better suited to handle an apartment complex, apartment complex of this magnitude. In addition, I know that the development agreement from '97 was sent over last night. But when you review some of those provisions that we did 21 years ago, by having the, you know, gated community access, all these people who live there, and also have other safety features in this apartment complex, there's probably a time for us to revisit whether or not, aside from the building repairs, that this apartment complex is actually in compliance with the township's development agreement. Again, I think it goes back to some of the concerns that have been expressed by Supervisor Sumbo and Clerk Row and Treasurer Doe. We have a lot of agreements and we have a lot of orders that require property owners to do it, A through Z. But unless we make them do A through Z, the labor that goes into these agreements, we'll know that sometimes will be, will be in vain. So we need to continue to monitor our development agreements, especially with this one here, where they have shown in the past not to be as responsive as they should. And I think the photographs pretty much tell the story that I shared with you last week as to why I felt strongly that this should be in the Circuit Court and not the District Court. So I think Mike's memo then lays it out very well, very well likewise.
Any questions? The next item's authorization to commit not to exceed amount of $81,000 for cost sharing with the City of Ypsilanti for paving improvements for Emmerich Street. There might be a possibility that the road commission will administer the contract and it will be less. But right now, the city had a, an amount that they had gotten that was in the packet from the engineers. Questions?
I just had one. It's probably a silly question, but on the OHM opinion, it just says under mobilization, $13,000. Do we know what that is?
Mobilization is when they move the equipment on site?
So we pay them to do the road, but we gotta pay them to bring their equipment there to do it?
Like, I, um, I do think it's gonna be much less with the road commission.
And do we know the cities portion again? I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
It's over, um, they're paying 50% plus all the engineering under the current proposal.
Okay.
Our, the maximum our amount would be is $81,000 with this current proposal, but we do think it's gonna be about $50,000. And the County Road Commission will actually bring the actual agreement here. But the City of Ypsilanti wanted to make sure that, the Township Board wanted to partner on this street, which is their fault village in the short distance. But it is bad there.
Oh, I know. Happy they want to partner this time. Last time they didn't want to partner.
Correct.
Good for them.
Correct.
Just a minute, just a point of clarification. The total costs, total estimated project costs, that's gonna be split in between the two entities? Or do I have that incorrect?
Yeah, what it was, um, our commitment was not to exceed $81,000.
Okay.
The City of Ypsilanti was gonna pay the difference between the two projects. They were gonna pay for the engineering and, as well as splitting the actual paving project.
Okay, all right. Then that, that explains it, thank you.
Does that help?
Yeah, it does, thank you.
Clerk Row?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. I just, um, the example that you have on there is what the city had put out. But the road commission, based on the numbers that they're currently getting, what they think the asphalt cost is gonna be, they can do it for a lot less. And I think when they bid those projects, if I'm not mistaken, they bid them, like, we're gonna be bringing back at the next board meeting in May 15th, road projects that the road commission's gonna do for Ipsy Township. When they bid those, they bid countywide, all of them. And so that mobilization cost, I think, gets spread amongst all of them. Like, they don't charge a reset up for every single.
Right.
Time. And so that's why the cost, it's so much cheaper for the road commission to do it than just to do one standalone. And there's no engineering on a standalone project. So that was put in the packet just to show you what it was gonna cost. But now, I mean, our obligation wasn't gonna change, but as Supervisor Sumbo said, we had committed to $81,000, because that's what our part was gonna be on that opinion of probable construction cost, our share. But because it's gonna be so much less, we think our cost is probably gonna be closer to $50,000 some thousand versus $80,000.
But they wanted to show that the Township Board wanted to commit to the project, then they would allocate their funds for it after us.
Yeah. And now, I think, if I'm not mistaken, we'll have our regular road projects coming back that, that we'll pay for with part of road commission dollars, matching funds in and out of our general fund or, out of the road, not general fund, out of the.
CDBG.
Thank you. Well, I was gonna say, out of the regular township budgets. Then there'll be a CDBG contract to do Foley, because that was the one road that needs to be done. It's in the, what they call the low to moderate income area. It won't cover all of it, but it'll be most of it. And so there'll be agreement for that. And then there'll be agreement for this road, for Emmerich, which will be a separate agreement, because that agreement.
Tire, gates. There was a whole bunch, there's a large, not a large list, a pretty good list coming back to the board for consideration.
So there'll actually be like three agreements probably coming back.
Attorney Winter?
Yes, I just wanted to maybe at least be cognizant that this may be one of the first contracts we may have seen since the township was dragged into this lawsuit over the Grove Road Bike Pass, over engineering, construction, et cetera. And if you see on this, I think from OHM, the work is also going to include ADA improvements. And so I just want to make sure that with, ultimately at the right time, be it the engineers, be it the contractors, be it road commission, that the township is listed as additional assured on everyone who's touching this project. Because I don't think that, that one lawsuit's been going on, I think, going on three or four years now. I don't think it's anywhere near getting resolved yet, the one involving the.
That was through a some concrete.
I think I did a letter or two, because I was concerned about the Harris Road project. I think Clerk Row confirmed there was, that the township had dollars involved in that project so that we didn't have to worry about the issue about indemnification on everybody who touches these projects. But at this point in time, all these parties are going to be carrying liability insurance, be it professional, be it Harris and Omissions, et cetera. And I just want to make sure that, again, everybody who touches these projects, that we are contributing moving forward, because that's all we're doing, is basically, it's a lot, but we're giving money. I don't want to have to spend, the township spent $81,000 and then later on, we have to spend dollars on a lawsuit that we had no control over the design, the construction, all those issues, especially when it involves.
Right.
You know, this kind of a project. And then just so, what Stan was saying too, I mean, the city has known for quite some time, and this is probably the most dangerous section in the city in terms of liability purposes. So the sooner this can be rectified, it's gonna be better for all the residents who use this road, be it city residents, be it township people, because they've lost a lot of people. They've lost mufflers, they've lost tires, they've got a lot of damage done on this section of highway.
We'll make sure that is duly noted about the sidewalks. This is a city road.
I know, but we're gonna.
Just for, they have to give it to the city or township or Augusta or Ipsy Township. So it's really, it is a city road.
No, but we're contributing dollars this way.
No, I know. Duly noted. The next item's a dust control and the amount of $5,000. We do this every year. Hopefully, the sweeping contract will come back with the other road contracts. Request to cancel May 1st, meaning do the May 8th special election? Any questions on that?
Sorry, I don't know if we've talked about it for our Planning Commission on May 8th. Guess I'm gonna have to cancel that meeting, because you'll be using this room.
And what?
Our.
I reserved it, so it must, maybe it was already canceled.
Our Planning Commission, I don't.
Yeah.
When I reserved the room.
I don't remember seeing it off, but.
So when I reserved the room for the election, I didn't see the Planning Commission in here. So was it already canceled, Charlotte?
Yeah, it got canceled at one of the meetings in January.
Oh.
Okay.
May 8th, you mean, Stan?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Please talk to him.
Yeah. Under authorization bids, we have a request to award the low bid and designate Trendseth Communications Group as the township preferred network cable installer until April of 2020. This was bid out, and Travis is here to answer any questions that you might have. The second item's request of Eric Copeland to seek sealed bids for the replacement of the roof at fire station number three, which is 20 South Hewitt. The bids will come back to the township. Number three is request of Carl Gerbach, Presidential Service, for approval to waive the financial policy and award the low quote to J. W. Turf for purchase of a John Deere ProGrader and trade in the 1995 Skid steer. So at one of our meetings, he was here, we talked about how we need to access North Bay Park and be able to do the repairs there. This machine will be able to help with that. It also will help with any limestone, like paths on Clubview had a request. So if it was dumped, then they could load this up and actually put in rocks or limestone or dirt or compost, whatever they need. Larry has a picture of it, if anyone did.
Madam Chair, yeah, Carl, and it will carry up to a ton of material. But Carl asked me to pass this book around, so it's the lower right-hand corner and is highlighted.
Other questions on that? All right. There's no other business, so.
Doug wanna do his report?
Who?
Doug, can you do his report now?
Doug, I've had two board members request that you do your report.
Since Larry dressed up for the occasion, I'm gonna do one. Debra, go.
Chief, did you have any?
Yeah, Madam Supervisor and Board. Apologize for coming in a little late, but item two, just want to bring it back to you guys if you had any questions about the automatic mutilated agreement with Van Buren.
I tried to summarize it. They had two trucks, they're going down to one truck.
Yeah. Our agreement started in January of 2015 with them. And I think they've had some staffing issues. Well, they have only two trucks for their entire township.
Right, so they had to have one.
And they didn't want to send them both to Ipsy for a fire call. They wanted to stagger them, so.
And they do, they respond to just the south.
South of Textile.
West or?
West to, into Green Farms, to Hitchingham.
That's where, because that's.
And we still haven't ironed out all the details, but it looks like with the new ladder truck coming into service, we have to come back to the board to modify the agreement we have with Superior and the city. And that's gonna include that ladder truck responding over the entire township. So we're still working on the details of that. Actually, the chief of Ypsilanti is on vacation, so we can't finalize it and bring it back to you till we get his approval.
But currently, is it in service and responding to calls as needed?
It is. Yes, yes. And it will respond currently. We just haven't formalized the agreement.
Gotcha.
Okay.
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 Mr. Winters, do you have an update?
Yes. And I know it seems like a lot, a lot of times this, these days, I spend a lot of time talking about money. But I, I think that's, you know, it's part of what we're trying to do, all the different infrastructure and other issues and expenses the township is trying to pay for without, and not having to have obviously a tax increase. In regards to the fire chief, I did tell him this evening, he took off on me again. Okay. I did talk with the insurance adjuster for the invoice that we sent over seeking reimbursement of the fire truck that we loaned the City of Ipsy for 24 weeks. We calculated that the value of that was $48,000. The insurance company is, I talked today, they're gonna issue a check for $24,000 today. I mean, they're gonna issue a check for $24,000. We're also going to try and seek the additional $24,000 from the insurance company who insured the vehicle they actually crashed into the city fire truck to begin with. If we get additional dollars based upon the invoices that we prepared in the agreement, those dollars will come to us and we're gonna do what we can to get the full $48,000. I, I'm not trying to, you know, I would just point out right now that later on, I mean, it may be, if they don't reimburse us that additional $24,000, it may be an opportunity to ask for it, maybe a set off on what we owe the city on the road improvement. But I, I'll leave that to you to determine that issue. We have also coming our way, we've been trying about the last 14, 15 months for DTE to release the $800,000 escrow account that is our money. This escrow account was accumulated, accumulated over a 25-year period based upon a few pennies per kilowatt. At the time, it was to ensure the township would be in a position to actually perform under the contract. And during that 25 years. And during that 25 years, uh, we performed on time, right, every time, and right now, there is no more money going into that escrow account. And starting in 2019, we will start getting 10% of it a year for the next 10 years until the contract is finally terminated. However, we're earning virtually no dollars on the interest. Uh, the $800,000 lump sum, which is, again, our money, would give us an opportunity to leverage those funds into something maybe greater right now as opposed to doing it over a 10-year period. And so I know that there's some significant road repair issues out there the township is facing and trying to figure out how to, uh, you know, where to find the dollars to do some of those expenditures. At the same time, we're going to continue to put dollars into the hydro facility. So we did meet with, uh, DTE last week, they indicated that, uh, they would go back to their internal people and discuss whether they could, uh, actually accept a performance, a performance bond that we would be paying for, which is very, very minimal compared to a letter of credit, obviously. But a performance bond that would guarantee our performance, that would allow them to release the $800,000 to us, and are supposed to know something by April 30th. But on a different note, this is why, this is how sometimes good things happen when you keep on this kind of, you know, digging, digging, digging. During the time period, they were going through our contract in regards to this whole issue about why we should release the escrow account to us, they discovered that they had, uh, not intentionally, but they had somehow, uh, shortchanged the township about $215,000. That's over and above the $800,000 that is not in dispute. And so, it appears that, and again, we've, we've not seen how they came up with those numbers, and I don't, I don't think that right now they've included any interest, and I'm not trying to say that we will make that a big deal, but I'd just like to see how they calculate that number. Larry might, he might include the interest, I don't know. But anyways, uh, that $215,000 is going to be something that we were not necessarily expecting to receive when we started making the inquiry about the $800,000. So, I will say right now that, uh, the $215,000, it appears about $40,000 of it is supposed to have been dollars that should have been paid in 2018, uh, calendar year, and it should, and Michael Seren has already wanted, has already answered us whether or not that will increase the revenue for the hydro fund, and the short answer is yes, it's going to increase the revenue for the hydro fund this year. I just don't know until I see the numbers. Is it 5,000 a month, is it 10,000 a month, because we've not seen how they break it down, except they're saying the other 215, about 40,000 of it is for this year, which if that's the case, it makes me wonder exactly how they came up with the 215. But anyways, uh, so that's a good thing that's happening in regards to potential revenue. We've also continued to, uh, make some headway, I think, in regards to trying to determine what is the accurate pilot payment that is owed the township in 2017 by ACM. Uh, there's a lot of construction that's planned for 2018, and we've met internally to make sure that we're tracking everything that goes on, because so much is happening so fast, some things might, uh, this might not always appear, uh, at first glance, so we're going to try and make sure we sharpen our look at what's going on there in 2018. Uh, we still have, we still have yet to resolve the 2017 pilot payment, and I'm hoping that, uh, by the next board meeting in May, that we will have a, a resolution in that regard. So, trying to work together and, you know, make it a win-win situation. Right now, we're also looking at, on a different note, on the Johnson Street, this was one that was part of a padlock, uh, this public disinterferement, uh, Judge Connors on this particular one, uh, did refer it to a mediator, and yesterday, Mike Radzik and Danny McLean met with the mediator and their attorney, and there was a five-month padlock agreement that has been agreed upon, it's going to shut down the property for five months. The property owner has to evict the tenants. At the same time, there's going to be, uh, kind of a more proactive going forward if this property is going to be a rental to do, uh, some very more enhanced background checks on the future tenants. At this point in time, we also are approaching that time of the year when we start trying to, uh, struggle with getting the list of foreclosed properties that have, uh, been foreclosed by the county. Uh, the deadline has come and gone for the ones that were three years delinquent. The township, as you know, in the past, has always, uh, considered as a right of first refusal on those properties. I know there are properties that have been foreclosed upon that have been problems, properties for the township that are sitting there vacant, and I believe the deadline, I believe the timeline for her to share us, share with us that information is after March 31st, April 1st, and so maybe someone from the township, uh, maybe, you know, maybe not me, but maybe the clerk could contact County Treasurer McCleary and just try and get that list, because we have to do our resolution and maybe also make sure that habitat is in agreement with those properties, including ones that they would like to, for us to acquire, and there may not be as many as there have been in the past, but I've been talking with Bill, Bill Helling today, uh, we definitely know there's several out there that are on that, that description, that have been very, very problematic properties for us that we should look seriously at acquiring under our right of first refusal once that, there's been that formal notification. So, those are, and we've already talked about the, uh, the issues with Huron Heights, Huron Ridge in regards to those ongoing issues and the compliance or lack thereof with the 1997 development agreement. So, a lot of things are still moving, uh, moving pieces here, we're still going forward also with getting the data needed for the cell tower, Holmes Road is going to be sold for 175. So, uh, there's a lot of good things that are still happening, and we'll keep on trying to make sure that the township is, uh, takes advantage of any opportunity that comes along that can allow us to use dollars and leverage those to, you know, a more enhanced opportunity, especially given what we think is a window of opportunity, uh, for the next three to four years.
Adjourn the meeting until seven o'clock? The time is 6:80. I sent it, Doug. He said April 1st?
It was May.
It was, was it April 1st? That's what he was talking about. That's what he said, I thought it was May, but anyway, I just sent the email, ask him to work. Is it, Doug, is it my law, is, oh, I'm sorry, is it?